I'd like to call this meeting back to order February 6, 2018, to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Item 52, the Sacramento County Hotel Worker Protection Act of 2018, introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 4.75 Title IV to the Sacramento County Code, requiring hotel employees assigned to work in guest rooms to be equipped with portable emergency panic button or notification device, wait full reading and continue to February 27 for adoption.
Ms. Planning Director?
Good afternoon, LeAnn Moffett, your county planning director. I don't have a PowerPoint, but I do have some introductory remarks. We are here today with an ordinance that would apply to hotels and motels within the unincorporated county that have, as proposed, 25 rooms or more in each facility. And this ordinance would require that each hotel provide their workers with a hotel panic button or panic device that would be available to call for help from a hotel manager or other appropriate security folks in case there is harassment of the hotel worker occurring. And it would also require each hotel or motel to have written sexual harassment policies in order to protect workers from such harassment. So the ordinance is attached to your board materials. It's a fairly brief ordinance, very targeted, and is being introduced today for your consideration.
Okay, questions for staff? Quite a few people signed up to speak.
I just had one comment.
Oh, you do have a comment, sorry, I didn't see your name come up just now. Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Serna?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank staff, our CEO, and planning director for bringing this back to the board. You'll recall that I asked that this be brought before the board at the end of our calendar year, last year, in fact, at the conclusion of our last hearing last year, having done some research about what other jurisdictions had pursued, including the city of Chicago and the city of Seattle, to institute similar policies requiring panic buttons and hotel guest sexual harassment policies. And that really was the genesis of the thought process about how that might apply here in Sacramento County. I may get to hear from the people that took time out of their busy days to join us here in chambers and look forward to a healthy discussion by this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
So I wanted, I had a couple of questions. I went on the county website and it listed some of the sexual assaults in the last year, around 144, only nine of those were hotel motel. And I am curious as to, I know other jurisdictions and other states have done this, I guess, passed an ordinance like this. I know that the state legislature is working on this very type of ordinance, right, actually just initiated the process at the state level. So I'm not sure why we're going into this now when it could go through several iterations before it gets to an end result at the legislature. But the question I have, the specific question I have is relating to, do we have a problem? Because if, out of 144 sexual assaults that happened in the county, in the unincorporated county, only nine of those were hotel motel, three of those were from the courtyard inn, and none of them were hotel employees. They were, you know, people who were staying at the hotel, or incidents that happened outside hotel employees. So I wanted to, you've made a recommendation that we have this ordinance, and I'm wondering, what do you base the need for this on in the unincorporated county?
I do have to admit, as staff, we have not done independent research on the number of assaults that have happened in hotels, so I don't have a specific answer for your question. We'd have to look into that.
If I could, just on that note, I think the nature of our recommendation is we got a request from a supervisor to look into it. And as we looked into it, we did see merit to bring something back. If this is an issue, realize this is the six that you just brought up, is to encourage our hotel folks to comply with any of the sexual harassment policies, the panic button. So that was the nature why we brought it back. And we're not suggesting by bringing this that there's a widespread issue that assaults are there. I think we have testimony today that could shed more light to it. But ours was more, there was a request made, we looked at the different ordinances, what could we do with it? And that's the nature of what we brought back, if the board is so inclined to do. Here's a framework for you to put some policy in place. So that's why, when planning looked at it, that's why we brought it back.
And then, so my other question is, why are we singling out the hotel industry? Because when we pass an ordinance like this, it's not just a matter of them purchasing, I guess, this wristband that has this noise maker on it. They have to put together a sexual harassment policy, which, you know, I'm sure that's not a bad thing, but this creates an expense to the hotel industry and it singles them out. But there are other industries where, I mean, there's sexual harassment everywhere. We have those kind of situations in every business. So to single out one industry, I wonder if that's fair. I'm wondering why we're singling out that one industry unless we have a problem in Sacramento County that we can say, you know, that we're responding to. So I wonder if there's a way that we can get a report back from the sheriff to identify, you know, in the unincorporated county, you know, what are the stats on sexual harassment as a whole? And so that's something I would, information I would like to see. And I guess that's right, that's all for now. I'll wait to hear the rest.
Just one?
Can I, can I offer some, some information that is relevant not to Sacramento County, to fairly state that? But in the city of Chicago, for instance, there was a survey taken, so it was a survey that was administered to a population of female housekeepers, hotel housekeepers. So it's not based on police reports, because oftentimes we'll find that there's no reporting because there's a real reluctance to report. So these were, this is a survey instrument that was applied that found that 58% of women surveyed, again, female hotel housekeepers, had been sexually harassed or assaulted, almost 60%, 42% had experienced being exposed to by a guest. And to me, even though that's in a different part of the country, one would have to assume that somehow sexual assault and harassment is somehow isolated geographically, which I personally don't believe that to be the case. So I just want to be clear, that was a lot of the inspiration for, again, my own thought process on this and the reason why I asked for this to come back to the board.
Okay. I'm sorry, Patrick, can, Ms. Kennedy?
I just want to chime in there as well and say that, you know, as far as reporting statistics, this is an area in which reporting statistics are about as inaccurate as you could probably get because of the lack of reporting. You know, and we're talking about some of the most vulnerable members of our society, of our workforce, who are there, who have reason to fear reporting. So I think by, just by the fact that you don't see it in the statistics online, we would be foolish and irresponsible to assume that that means it's not taking place.
Okay. Anything else before I take public comment? Okay, our first speaker is Beth Hasset, then Enriqueta, and Jenny, and Maria.
Good afternoon, I am Beth Hasset, the CEO of Weave, and we are the Rape Crisis Center for Sacramento County and work regularly with victims of sexual assault as well as sexual harassment and sexual abuse. And I can tell you, sexual assault and rape are grossly under-reported crimes. Sexual harassment, especially in the workplace, and especially when it's perpetrated by males with power over females who have no power, is never reported. And the thing that I like about this ordinance is, you can give somebody a panic button, and that in and of itself is just a tool, but when you pair it with policy that provides protections and safety for those workers so they feel comfortable coming forward and saying something and feel that their jobs are not going to be in jeopardy, and a change of culture in that workplace. And let's bear in mind, a hotel or motel is a very personal, strange workplace, if you really think about it. Where else do employees go into people's bedrooms and bathrooms on a regular basis? It's just rife for people who are wanting to perpetrate this type of violence against someone. So I look forward to continued vetting. I love statistics, and I fear that there won't be the rich stats that we'd like to see because it is such an under-reported and invisible crime. And I look forward to partnering in any way with the county as you move forward in making the right decision for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Enriqueta?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Enriqueta.
So my name is Enriqueta.
Yo he trabajado por los últimos doce años en hoteles muy reconocidos.
So I've been working 12 years at hotels that you guys are very familiar with.
Aquí en el área de Sacramento.
Here in Sacramento.
He tenido muy malas experiencias.
I've had bad experiences.
En una ocasión, un guest pidió algo y yo lo llevé.
At one time, a guest asked for something and I went to take it to them.
Él me dijo que me sentara con él en la cama y me empezó a enseñar bastante dinero.
So he told me to sit on the bed and showed me a lot of money.
Inmediatamente me salí.
And immediately I left.
En otra ocasión.
In another occasion.
Otro guest más agresivo.
Another guest who was more aggressive.
Estuve tocando el cuarto, nunca me contestó.
I was knocking on the door and nobody answered.
Cuando abro la puerta, el señor estaba completamente desnudo en su cama.
So a man opened the door and he was completely naked.
Nada más me volvió a ver como sonriéndose y yo inmediatamente.
So when I looked, he just was laughing.
Cerré la puerta.
Closed the door.
Lo reporté a mi supervisor.
So I reported it to my supervisor.
Platicando con mis compañeras.
And I talked to my coworkers.
Ese mismo guest.
That same guest.
Le ha pasado con varias compañeras cosas.
And had did, that same guest had did things to other coworkers of mine.
Muy desagradables.
And things that are not, I'm sorry.
Muy malas.
Yeah, bad things.
Y yo siento que no es justo que vayamos a trabajar con miedo.
So I feel that it's not fair that we go to work with fear.
Que no sabemos cómo nos van a tratar los guests.
That we don't know how guests is going to treat us.
Lo que vamos a ver, qué nos van a decir.
And what are we going to see, what are they going to tell us?
Me gustaría, me nos encantaría que ustedes pasaran esto.
So we would want you guys to pass this?
Para sentirnos seguras en nuestro área de trabajo.
So that we can feel protected in our workplace. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thanks.
Is it possible?
Jenny Amaya?
Can we just ask if they're in the city or the unincorporated county to identify that?
Could you respond to that?
Yeah, with the, Sacramento.
In Sacramento, city of Sacramento.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Jenny Amaya.
Good afternoon, my name is Jenny Amaya. I'm here today. To ask you today to support us. And to pass the law for us housekeepers. Yo trabajo 17 años en un hotel muy reconocido del área de Sacramento. So I worked, I've been working 17 years in a very familiar hotel here in Sacramento. Y yo he sido acosada constantemente. So I've been sexually harassed consistently. La última, la última vez que fui acosada. The last time I was harassed. Yo estaba limpiando el cuarto. I was cleaning a room. Y yo sentí que el guest del siguiente cuarto abría la puerta y me vigilaba. So I felt a guest open the door and kind of was like, looking at me. Yo, este, estuve miedo, seguí vigilando. So I was scared. Limpié un cuarto y. I cleaned one of my rooms. Él salió desnudo. And he came out naked. Entonces cuando él miró que yo lo estaba vigilando, ver qué iba a ser. So when he saw me, watch him, what he was going to do? Me movía otro cuarto. I went to a different room. Él seguía vigilándome. So he kept on watching me. Cerré la puerta. I closed the door. Llamé a mi manager. I called my manager. Inmediatamente me mandaron a seguridad. Immediately they sent me security. Y el hombre se fue en ese momento. That man left at the moment. El hombre no tenía equipaje en el cuarto. So he didn't have any luggage in the room? Él había comprado comida con tarjetas que no tenían fondos. He used credit cards that didn't have funds to buy food? En ese momento bajaron y chequearon las cámaras. So at that moment, they came and checked the cameras. Esta persona no fue reconocida porque se tapaba la cara al salir y entrar al hotel. So this particular guest was, on the video, it showed that he covered his face when he would go in and out of the hotel. Inmediatamente me movieron a otro piso y me dijeron que no regresara. So immediately, my manager sent me to a different floor to do my work. Porque esta era una persona, era un delincuente. So it was a delinquent. En otra ocasión. Another occasion?
You passed your time, if you could please wind up your comments. Thank you so much.
Si quieres, nomás decir un resumen del fin. Pues eso me pasó tres veces la. So this happened to me three times. Ahorita últimamente, el último le toqué tres veces. The last time I knocked three times on the door. Y él ya estaba desnudo a un paso de yo entrar a la puerta. So as I would go into the door, he was naked. He was masturbating. Y otra vez pues, no, mi seguridad subió y me quitó. Again, security came and took me to another room.
Please wind up your comments.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es María Segoviano.
My name is María Segoviano.
Tengo ocho años trabajando para un hotel muy reconocido aquí en Sacramento.
I've been working here in Sacramento at a familiar hotel for eight years.
Yo tuve una experiencia con un cliente pues desagradable.
So I had an experience as well with a bad guest.
And was this hotel in the city or the county?
Was, in the city. County, it's the same either way.
No?
Well, county, I'm sorry.
We're the unincorporated area.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Me preguntó, en la mañana llegué, saqué mi carrito y me preguntó que quién.
So the guest asked me, I got my cart ready.
Que quién iba a limpiar su recámara.
Asked who was going to clean his room?
Y le dije que yo.
I said, I'm going to clean it.
Entonces se fue él, yo vi cuando se fue y yo acudí a limpiarle su recámara.
So I saw when he left and I went in to clean the room.
Cuando entré.
When I went inside.
Entré al baño y.
I went to the bathroom.
Pasaron como cinco minutos.
It was about five minutes.
Eche la puerta.
I heard the door.
Y dije, hello.
And he said, hello.
Entró él y le digo, oh, necesita algo, me salgo.
And I asked him, do you need something?
Porque yo necesito que se salga para yo limpiarlo.
I need to, I need you to leave so that I can clean your room.
Y me dijo, sí, solamente voy a tomar mi teléfono.
He said, oh, I just need to get my phone.
Entonces yo tomé la puerta.
So I kind of held the door.
Para que él se saliera.
So he could leave.
Pero él entró así hacia la recámara y no se salía.
So he kind of came in and went to a certain area of the bed.
Y salió solamente ya con ropa interior.
And so when he came back out, he was only in his underwear.
Yo no le dije nada, solamente me salí.
So I didn't say anything and I just left.
Me salí y ya pasó eso.
And that happened?
A lo mejor fue mi error que no, no lo reporté.
So I didn't report it.
Mi compañera me dijo, pues pasan cosas y nunca hace nada.
My coworkers made a comment and said, well, things happen and, you know, sometimes they don't do anything about it.
Al día siguiente, yo veo que él sale con su maleta.
The next day.
Y le dijo, bye.
And he said, bye.
Y le dije, bye, que tenga buen día.
I said, bye, have a good day.
Me fui a limpiar su cuarto, toqué, no había nadie, entré.
I went to go clean his room, I knocked the door, nobody was there.
Pasaron otra vez cinco minutos.
About five minutes, six minutes, he came back.
Se regresó y le dijo, olvidó algo.
I said, did you forget something?
Pues sí.
Yes.
Le olvidó decirle.
I forgot to tell you.
Que yo la puedo llevar a donde usted quiera.
But I can take you anywhere you want to go.
Yo le dije, yo, excuse me.
I said, excuse me.
Dijo, sí, cómo me dijiste que te llamaba.
He said, oh, what did you say your name is?
Could you, could you wind up your remarks?
Yep.
We have a two-minute limit and you're almost to three.
So she's just saying that she went to kind of sign to where her name tag was, and he touched her there.
Y tocó mi, mi pecho.
And that he touched her breast.
Yo aventé su mano.
And I said, hey, don't do that.
No touch me y me salí.
And then she left. Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Espero que, que nos ayuden porque es duro nuestro trabajo y.
She said, my, our job is very hard and I hope that you help us.
Y estar aguantando todo esto, gracias.
Thank you. Julia? Would you mind telling your other speakers that there's a two-minute limit, please?
Madam Chair, my name suggests that we give three minutes.
Hold on.
When they have, okay, when they have the.
Yeah, mid story.
So my name is Julia Gonzalez, and I work in housekeeping.
In city or county?
County.
Unincorporated area?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Tuve una experiencia hace unos 20 años.
So 20 years ago, I had an experience.
Toqué housekeeping.
So I knocked, said housekeeping.
El guest me dijo que me pasara a hacer su cuarto.
So the guest told me, okay, you can come in and clean my room?
Él se metió al baño.
He went to the restroom, the guest.
Y yo agarré y le tendí la cama.
So I started making the bed.
Y yo pensé que luego se iba a salir del baño y se iba a ir.
And I thought he was going to leave the bathroom and leave the room.
Sacudí el cuarto.
So I started cleaning the room.
Y cuando yo regresé, el cliente estaba dentro del baño, pero estaba abierta la puerta.
So when I came, he was still in the bathroom and the bathroom door was open.
El espejo era muy grande al pasar yo.
And the mirror was really big.
Te lo vi por el espejo que estaba masturbando.
And I could see him in the mirror, he was masturbating.
Y yo agarré, me fui y ya no regresé.
So I got my stuff and I left.
Me fui a hacer otro cuarto.
I went to go clean another room.
Estaba lavando la tina y sentí que alguien me espiaba.
And I was cleaning the bathtub, and I could feel somebody watching me.
Cuando yo voltea, era el mismo guest.
And when I looked, it was the same guest.
Me asusté.
He scared me.
Vi al husman allí que andaba aspirando.
I saw the houseperson vacuuming.
Y le dije lo que había pasado.
And I told him what happened.
Me dijo que no me preocupara que yo andara.
And he told me, oh, don't worry about it, and I'm going to call somebody.
Y otra ocasión.
Another occasion?
Otro cliente le toqué en otro hotel y le dije.
Another hotel, I knocked on the door, asking for the guest.
Que iba a hacer el servicio.
That I was going to give him service, and he told me, come in.
Que nada más el baño le hiciera.
That just to clean the bathroom.
Entonces, este, yo le, le iba a hacer el baño.
So I was going to clean the bathroom.
Cuando él se acercó junto a mí, yo estaba contando las toallas.
When he got close to me and I was picking up the towels.
Cuando yo voltea, él estaba encuerado.
And when I looked, he was naked.
Le dije, I'll be back.
I'll be back.
Aventé todo.
And she dropped everything and I left.
Ya no regresé.
And I didn't come back.
No le di servicio.
And I didn't give him service. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Roxana?
Hello. Hi, my name is Roxana Tapia, I'm an organizer with JNIA here at Local 49. Many other housekeepers have faced bad treatment from hotel guests, but they are embarrassed and scared to speak out. Many told me the same story. The guests don't answer when they knock on the door, and when they come in, the guest is naked or even masturbating. One of our housekeepers told me that she was, that she saw a guest leave the room and went into the, to start cleaning. While she was cleaning the bathroom, the guest returned, and with her stuck in the bathroom, he stripped naked and started, began masturbating, right in front of her. She was able to run out of the room, but no one should be treated like this when they are just trying to do their job. Many of our members have been touched inappropriately by guests, some have been asked where they live, what time they get off of work, and even follow around the hotel. Some guests even try to bribe housekeepers with dinners or money if they, if they do special favors for them. Housekeepers work alone on the empty guest floors. Housekeepers work alone on the empty guest floors, often with no one to hear them if they are called out. Many of our members have told me that they will feel better if they could get help immediately when they trap with this guest. Sorry. We hope you vote yes today. Housekeeper's safety matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina.
Hi, my name is Gina Longo. I'm a lead organizer with Unite Here Local 49. As you've heard some of the testimony today, I just wanted to make it clear that Unite Here has spoke with many, many of our members regarding sexual harassment in the workplace. Here locally in Sacramento County, you know, we have many hotel workers that we've talked to. And this is a problem countywide. We are proud and are in full support of the Hotel Workers Protection Act. And we encourage you to vote yes today. Our Unite Here has been a big role in the Me Too movement all over the country. But countywide, we believe that our workers in the industry need protections. And we are in full support of this.
Thank you Gina, thank you for translating today.
Thank you.
Erin. I'm just using first names because several people said they didn't want me to use their last names, so.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm Erin Mori. I'm the Board President of My Sister's House, the local organization that provides culturally responsive assistance to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. Particularly those of the Asian Pacific Islander descent and all women of underserved color. So today Supervisor Serna's proposal of helping hotel workers is an important step, not only for sexual harassment, but for sexual assault. And what is especially significant about this ordinance is that, as we can see today, that it effectively addresses or removes language barriers. And that is what often many hotel workers face. And having this panic button is essential to combat those language barriers. As My Sister's House provides support for women, we see that many of them have had jobs in this field. And these women don't speak out for fear of retaliation. And so having this device is essential for them to do their job. So as part of My Sister's House, I just wanna say that we are in support of the county as this ordinance moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Volma. Volma.
Good afternoon and thank you guys for having us here. I just wanna say, we can see the political climate in this country. And we can see women coming out and saying that there have been abused women from Hollywood, a bunch of people with power. These folks here with Unite Here, they have no power. They have no voice. So what we are asking you guys is to be their voice and vote yes on this measure to give them peace of mind. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Volma. Fabrizio.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Supervisors. My name is Fabrizio Sasso. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Central Labor Council. We have over a hundred unions affiliated with the Labor Council. A hundred and seventy thousand union members represented amongst those unions, including the hotel workers. We are here to express our support of this ordinance. You know, it's sitting here and listening to these stories, it's gotta be pretty tough. And, but not as tough as actually living through this experience, through these traumatic experiences. You know, we have to applaud these workers' bravery and courageousness for coming forward today and talking and sharing their stories. Because they could be saving someone else in the process by letting their voices be heard. You know, the Me Too movement is not going away. It is here, it's all around us, it's at the national level. We hear about it at the Capitol. But we rarely hear stories about, we rarely hear stories about workers who are domestic workers or hotel workers. Because they are the ones that are mostly quiet about this because they're afraid of retaliation by their bosses. And also their attackers aren't famous, quite frankly. So there are thousands, maybe millions more of these types of stories that are being untold and we can do something about it. You know, it's good to note that these workers are the most vulnerable in the workforce. They are working alone a lot of times, they are working at night. We know what happens in hotels at night, we've all stayed in hotels. We hear what goes on in the hallways and people coming in and out in different states of mind. And so these workers should not be put in a position where they feel afraid to go to work every day, to be attacked. And hopefully, we can save them from that experience in the future. And maybe even save some lives in the process and we urge you to vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers I have signed up. Is there anyone here that didn't get a chance to speak? Okay then, we'll move on to comments from the board. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. I just wanted to make mention of something that's very important. We didn't hear from our mayor, Daryl Steinberg. He did however submit a letter of support that should have been distributed. It was addressed to me but it should have been distributed to all five supervisory districts. And in the letter, the mayor not only communicates his support for this ordinance and encourages our iBoat. But he's also referencing the fact that there is a similar effort that will take place soon at the city of Sacramento. So I know there's been a lot of concern expressed by Supervisor Frost about, or interest, maybe not necessarily concern, about where the incidents occurred. Whether it was in the incorporated city limits of one of the cities in our county or the unincorporated area. But again, I think this is unfortunately a very troubling trend of behavior, bad behavior. That doesn't respect political boundaries, doesn't respect whether, you know, you're staying in a hotel or working in a hotel in the city limits or not. And that's why it's important, I think, for us not to reinvent the wheel. We're looking, you know, again, the inspiration came from looking at what others have done to address this problem. I'm encouraged to know that the city of Sacramento is already expressing an interest in a similar measure that would protect hotel workers working in hotels within the city limits. Perhaps there's even political will that might emerge in some of the other cities within our county to do likewise. So I know others may be in the queue to make comment. But I'd like to move adoption of the ordinance. You know, look for a second.
Ms. Frost, then Mr. Kennedy, then Mr. Natoli.
I wanna start by expressing my appreciation to the women who have come forward to speak today, to have the courage to do so. And I have a little bit of an understanding of your situations, having worked in the emergency room, having had my own experiences in life. At the age of sixty-two, you run into situations that are not good. And I just want to applaud you for being here. I do know that even if these types of situations are under-reported in the hotel industry, if, they're probably under-reported across the board. And so I have concern relating to passing an ordinance without having done our research to understand, you know, what the landscape is and who is impacted by these sexual assaults. You know, what kind of impact across our unincorporated county. I'm also aware that at the state level, there is a movement underfoot. And they're working, actually gaining momentum on, at the legislature for a bill that's going to address this. And so when we make an ordinance at the county or in one county, unincorporated county, or in one city, it kind of, it creates an uneven landscape as far as, you know, for business owners as to what the rules are. And it makes it more difficult and it impacts how businesses can understand the rules and regulations of a region. It's, this to me is, you know, I think we need policy that is sensible, that is gonna, we, all of our employees should be protected at the county here. And at every business. There are other businesses where these kind of things happen. I just think we haven't done enough research and that there's stuff going on at a much higher level that will actually filter down to all of us, that we should wait and see how things are going at the state level so that we can all go under one regulation. So for that reason, I, at this time, it's not that I'm against protecting our employees. I think our employees need to be protected. I just am interested in having all the information before we make a decision on that.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, I, you know, obviously I agree with Mr. Sasso in that the Me Too movement is not going away, nor should it. We have to speak out against sexual harassment, sexual abuse clearly and be vigilant on it. Now, I do think that what we're talking about here is kinda like the Oscars when the music plays, I have to stop. So, no.
I'm sorry, could whoever that is turn off their phone?
So, but, you know.
Thank you.
This is a workforce that is uniquely situated in that they put themselves in harm's way on a daily basis. You know, walking into a man's bedroom, basically, where the door can be locked behind you is a higher risk factor than most professions for this type of abuse. So I do see that this is necessary. I do believe that as, you know, whether it's, you know, city, county, or wherever, it doesn't make any difference to me. Because whether or not everybody got up today to speak was working at a hotel within the incorporated part of Sacramento County. That's not to say that there aren't legions of women behind them in the unincorporated part of the county with the same exact issue. And I feel confident that that is the case. So I wanna thank Mr. Serna for bringing this forward. Kind of gave me a "darn it, I wish I'd thought of that" moment. So I really appreciate your leadership on this and that's why I'm supporting. Thank you.
Mr. Natoli.
I have a question before I make some comments. So as far as enforcement of the ordinance, it's not clear as to who the enforcement entity would be. Would it be through code enforcement, would it be through business licensing, and would this be a condition of receiving a business license? So how are we structuring this?
Right, we have not written enforcement details into the ordinance. We would intend to enforce it through the business license process. So probably the most likely scenario for verifying would be either planning staff verifying it or business license staff. And we could work that out. Alternatively, planning often does use code enforcement as an arm for our field work. So that might be the third option. So we have multiple options for verifying. But we would seek to check to make sure that each hotel is doing this when their business licenses come up for their renewal.
Okay, so in that verification, again, not knowing for certain how you would do that. But then you would ask for proof of the, a copy of their sexual harassment and any worker protection policy as relates to this ordinance. And then what about the physical devices that they would employ?
Yes, because it is new, I think we'd have to decide whether we might need to do some field visits to make sure. But we would looking, we would be looking for proof of the harassment policies. And we'll have to determine whether we need to make field visits or not. There's a limited number of hotels, so that's probably pretty doable.
Right.
It's not a.
Okay, I'm just trying to get to practical terms. It's one thing to put it on paper, but then, you know, to make sure that we're able to follow through on it. Okay, well, I would just say that I'm supportive of what's presented here to us this afternoon. I would have hoped that we would have done a little broader notification. We reached out to the industry and representatives maybe in the audience. Certainly, obviously, the workers are represented. Because as a part of this, once we adopt it, then we're gonna send them a copy of it and say, you know, guess what? So I know my office received a couple of calls from hotel owners or operators that, you know, indicated some question about what we're taking up today. But generally, this makes good sense. I wanna certainly thank folks who've come forward here today and told their stories. Those aren't easy to tell nor to, certainly to recall. But I think there are examples of where, in some of those situations, if there'd been other devices available. As one of the ladies mentioned, she called, another one had called out to another worker. But in the event that there wasn't a phone available or there were some other trappings, I think this makes good sense for those that work in, you know, again, a very fluid environment as relates to people coming in and out, goings. And most of them are guests in hotel, but not always. And one of the stories kinda recited that we're sure if the person was of nefarious doings or not. But I just think that something like this is, should be fairly simple to address. And, you know, whether they adopt it statewide or not, I guess that's to be seen. And certainly, the industry as well as obviously represented workers will have an opportunity in that setting to debate the merits or not. But I think from the standpoint of our community and again, of those that live and work here and to provide services to folks who are staying in our accommodations and our guests here in this community. I wanna make sure that our workers are safe and certainly our guests as well. So I'm supportive of this today.
Ms. Frost.
I have a question relating to the device. Does it ring through to the main office or does it just make a loud noise?
They have some flexibility. The key thing is needs to be able to reach a person that is able to respond, not just another maid. So what's written in the ordinance is the device needs to reach a manager or a security person or someone who is in a position to be able to come to the assistance.
So I'm assuming a security because a hotel management probably isn't gonna instruct their employees to respond to a situation like that, that would create liability for the hotel.
Well, it could go to the manager.
So.
Depends on.
It could generate more 911 calls if they don't have security. Do most hotels have security? I don't know.
I would think most of the larger hotels have security.
If they're required to wire it to the front desk, that's hugely, I mean, that's a huge endeavor.
It doesn't have to be wired. It could be a wireless device. There is some flexibility for each hotel to pick a device that reaches someone who can come help the worker.
Thank you.
Okay. I would have preferred to wait for the state ordinance to be passed. But I'm fine going ahead with this and it would be preempted by a state law. So we'll just be ahead of the state a few months here, I think. So I apologize to Guadalupe. We were too far along before I realized I hadn't seen your card. Are there any other questions or comments?
I just, just one, Madam Chair. I just wanna personally extend my gratitude to the Unite Here Local 49 folks that, again, took time out of your day to be here and share some very difficult stories about your experience. But as you can see, it's really kinda carried the day in terms of impressing upon this board and emphasizing the need for this policy. So again, gracias por todo.
I feel like all women in, who are working should carry a whistle. I think we've all been in that circumstance and it is very difficult. So, thank you for that. No further questions, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Frost voting no.
Okay, then if I understand, we're going back to item forty-seven?
That is correct.
Okay.
As Troy's making his way down, one of the commitments we made to the board was that last year was, the question was on TO funding. At that point, we had recommended for the board to set aside a million dollars to do some grant funding. We're back, and as we had committed, we're back to you today to also see if there's interest from the board. We're recommending another million. We're recommending another million dollars for next budget.
Let's pause a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could leave the room quietly so we can hear our county executive, sure appreciate it. In the front row there, thank you.
In January of 2017, we did come to the board and we made a recommendation of setting aside a million dollars out of our TO transit occupancy tax to do some grant funding. And we had set out a process to how we wanted to allocate the money, who should get it. We had success with the process. We came to you in September where the board made some decisions on who should be funded. When we came to you in January of 17, we did commit to come back to you in a one-year timeframe to let you know if we're gonna make another recommendation. And that is the case that Troy is gonna talk about. We're gonna recommend setting aside another million dollars and also what the process should be. What we will be recommending is basically, we like the process that was set in place, the two-by-two, that, oh, the two-by-two, the subcommittee that was formed, that did help us.
I got a little twitch there.
Gear slipped on me. But we are pretty excited about this process.
When screaming from the room.
So with that, I want to turn it over to Troy before I introduce something else that I didn't mean to introduce.
Thank you, Nav. Troy Givens with Sacramento County Department of Economic Development. I do have a PowerPoint. Today, I'd like to, I know it's getting late in the day, I'd like to give you a brief overview and background, talk a little bit about the 2017 process, our recommendations for 2018, and then any proposed adjustments that your board may want to make as well. At the beginning of 2017, as Nav had mentioned, the board expressed interest in allocating a portion of transit occupancy tax funds through a competitive application process. Based on that direction, staff came back to the board in February. In late February, your board approved a pilot program. As Nav had mentioned, you set aside a million dollars in the budget process to set up this competitive application to provide financial support to nonprofit organizations and government entities for community-based programs and/or services in Sacramento County. Beginning in March of that year, the Office of Economic Development conducted significant outreach and advertisement. We partnered with several folks, including the Impact Foundry. We utilized the county's website, newsletters, social media, local chambers, P bids, Sacramento Region Community Foundation, and direct mail to over 300 nonprofits. We had a robust response. We had 149 applications. We had 18 and a half million dollars in requests. So based on that volume and diversity, the county hired Shelley Willis, a local grant consultant, who helped us with this process. We came up with a two-step process which included subject expert panels, five of them. And then that panel scored applications and forwarded the scores to the TOT Grant Review Panel. As Nav had mentioned, this included two board members as well as three chiefs of staff from the remaining districts. On September 26, your board approved 31 applications and asked us to report back. Those 31 grant applications are in various processes of completion. We've received several invoices. We've processed those and paid those out. We've had two, two of those 31 grant applications are complete as far as their projects. The others are in process and we expect over the next several months, we'll be receiving regular requests for invoices and verifying those and paying those out. We do recommend for 2018, 2019, that we continue the program that your board establishes during the budget process, the amount that they wish to fund this at, and that we designate two board members to oversee that TOT Grant Program Application and Review Panel as we did last year, and also include the three remaining chiefs of staff from the remaining board offices to represent that. Ultimately, that group helps formulate the recommendation that's made to your board. As it relates to the potential proposed changes, we have two major changes and three minor changes. As you can see on the left side of your screen, grantees, as it currently stands, must be of nonprofit or government entities. We're proposing that that, based on input from the consultant, from some of the applicants and some of the board feedback that we received, that that be limited to just nonprofit organizations at this point. The 12 applications that we received from government entities were more public works type of applications for improvements of sidewalks and other things of that nature that we thought would more appropriately be addressed in those jurisdictions, public works types of budgets. Proposals...
Just to pause there, Troy.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not particularly against that, but how do you compare that to Health and Human Services requests?
Well, we have Health and Human Services that come countywide as well. That is...
Yeah, well, so do the, so do the parks requests and the, you know...
Right.
I think the, one issue with that that we've had is that we have our own issues with sidewalks and roads.
Yeah.
And Health and Human Services is a countywide function that we perform for the whole county. When the other jurisdictions started asking for grants or money to fix sidewalks and their potholes, is where the rub came from.
I was thinking Sacramento County, not other jurisdictions. Okay. Mr. Natale, do you want to speak now or at the end?
Yeah, just on that one, I'm going to speak to some of the others that goes down through, but since we're on that, I've opened it up. Again, looking at that, there's a reason why I think we opened it pretty broadly. The park districts are partners and so maybe they come in with something that would be joint with other organizations. I think about one that was funded was the Wayfinding Down in the City of Gold. I utilized some of the district monies for that. But the idea was, because we talked about economic development, we spent a lot of time this time last year talking about that. And even as it relates to capital projects, you can get to in a moment, it seems to me that we have our own issues with that, but basically we're opening this up so folks can seek to do that. Now, I think, you know, as they got ferreted out in the process, that most of those didn't rise in level. Some were very expensive. I remember some of those were, you know, multiples of hundreds of thousands of dollars in their request. And some of these other limitations, you know, that are being proposed could, you know, I think, make it much more difficult for them even to consider applying. But for one, I see park, you know, park districts and maybe school districts and even other municipalities as being partners in the overall, and when we talk about economic development or community improvement, quality of life, we represent all those citizens as well. So, again, these are, you know, county-generated TO tax, but I mean, we opened it pretty broadly. And unless there was some other problems besides what you just said, I don't know why we would restrict it. You know, they still gotta float to the top as it relates to the committee structure and the analysis, you know, the consultant does, and ultimately by our board making a determination. So I guess I'm not looking to limit it, very frankly, so.
We certainly have that option based on board direction.
Thanks.
The second is proposals can be used for any public purpose. The one restriction we wanted to make a distinction of here is that, based on the feedback we had, the board wanted to put this money to more immediate use. So we wanted to restrict capital campaign projects that had multiple years of fundraising involved, where the money would just be camped for six or seven or 10-plus years in order to build a large project.
Shovel ready.
Excuse me?
Shovel ready.
Shovel ready, correct.
But they can use it for capital improvements, they just did a capital campaign.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I was making a joke.
Oh, sorry.
No, I was, I'm sure though, I heard you said, so they can actually do it, so I know, I was making a joke.
We had, grant cycle could be used for one or two years. It's been our experience that two years presents a number of different challenges when these projects cross over, so we suggested that it's a one-year funding cycle. Again, shovel ready, to your point earlier. We had a maximum funding level, or a minimum funding level, excuse me, of $20,000. We would propose to lower that down to 10, to broaden this out to as many groups as potentially possible. The third is, or the fifth is, excuse me, we had a maximum funding level of $500,000. It was our, what we discovered in that process is that if we did that $500,000 maximum, we would be funding a maximum of two projects. We heard clearly from the board at one point in time that we wanted to be as broad and diverse as possible and bring in as many potential organizations. So that cap seemed very high. We, in talking with the consultant and looking at the types of projects that we funded, we ended up with a recommendation of a maximum funding level of $50,000. That certainly, at your board's discretion, could be raised in this discussion if that is too restrictive. But we wanted to put that on the table for discussion. The last is we have a proposed schedule here. This timeline is based on feedback we received from applicants as well. We started the timeline last year during tax time. It was hard for some of the nonprofits to be responsive during that period, so we've moved it back. This will also allow us, if you remember during the process, I'm sure you all do, you had massive binders of information. We would like to move this entirely online where we would streamline the information that you receive so it's more effective and more efficient. It accommodates the timeline for the applicants better and it would move that entire process, including the ranking that the expert panels go through online as well. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Natale?
Just want to maybe comment on the maximum. You've, you know, pretty big haircut there, going from, you know, a half a million. I think, you know, your point about, you know, if you just funded two of those, that would eat up all the money. But I guess I would suggest maybe make it a maximum $100,000. That gives you some flexibility for a project that might be shovel-ready, that might be in any given year, something that they could deliver on. And again, it has to compete with everything else out there. So it seemed to me that that might be a little more reasonable, recognizing you can't, you can do some things for $50,000 and hopefully they bring match to the table and all the things we encourage them to do. But $100,000 can be a big deal for an organization that really has something spectacular they want to do and that would be, you know, be the capper and we might see fit to fund it. So I would, I would suggest we maximum fund it at $100,000, that's my thought.
Ms. Frost?
It wouldn't hurt my feelings if each of us had $100,000 instead of $50,000 to spend in our respective district. That's what I would like to see.
Is that, is that what Dawn just suggested?
No.
No, district funds versus...
Each, last year, each of us had $50,000 for, at our discretion.
$100,000.
It was actually, in this process, we had $750,000 allocated to the highest ranking and then each district had $50,000 to appoint to any one of those 149.
Oh, in this, I thought you meant in the budget, the district funds.
If I understand.
You meant the segregation of $50,000 each here.
Right.
You're saying in order to address district issues, if each district had a hundred instead of...
Had a hundred instead of fifty.
So that'd take $500,000 off the table.
So it'd be 500 general and then 100,000 each district, but the universe of potential grantees would come from this list, right?
Yeah, that's what we did last year.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'd go along with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Both comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
What?
I'm also, I agreed with Ms. Natale as well.
Yeah.
On which?
Raising the, from 50 to...
Oh, 50 to 100, yeah.
Just as for maximum flexibility.
Okay, so with those two corrections?
Just one other, so how much from administrative standpoint, are we still putting $200,000 a year into administering this as well?
The $200,000 is actually for the entirety of the program, not just this piece. So that includes the $7.2 million plus or minus that we administer through the entirety of the programs, including civic and board district monies.
Right.
It was never intended just to be for this piece.
Supervisor Kennedy speaks.
So while we're on that subject, and we kind of talked about this during these discussions, Chair Peters and I did, I'd like to take a look at the process that we have of administering these funds. For example, if I'm gonna, you know, give $250 to a Little League, they have to fill out some...
20 pages.
Pretty arduous paperwork for such a thing. I mean, I think that we should revisit how we do that. It seems like it could be...
We keep talking about it and it gets to be more pages.
It could be easier than it is.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Yeah. Plus ugly calls from accounting and finance and all that to the organizations.
I think there has been some review, we're doing...
Why don't you send all of us a copy of what it is? That'll probably help shorten the process.
Absolutely.
Because we've got, some are down to two pages and some are down to a...
They've been reduced significantly.
I've actually had organizations refuse a grant because they couldn't, it wasn't worth it to them.
Let us do this, let us look at it, we'll send you back what the streamlined version will be.
Within a fairly short amount of time.
Within the calendar year. I'm teasing, a joke.
It's late.
How long we're shovel-ready?
Of course we'll be.
And one other comment, Troy, that we've talked about once or twice during the year, and that is the application form was, you know, kind of put together on the fly. And I had occasion to talk to the Regional Foundation, who's in the business of administering grants and writing grant applications and that sort of thing, and they thought that there, that there could be some improvements made to our form, so...
We agree with that assessment.
Okay, so you're, yeah, they have big day giving at the beginning of May, so you're, you know, close to running out of time if you're gonna meet this deadline.
They've been a very supportive partner in helping us bounce off ideas, so we will definitely implement that.
Okay, terrific. So with the two changes of 50 to 100 and, 50 to, yeah, 50 to 100.
Twice.
Yeah, twice, times two.
We need two board members, Natale's...
Oh, it should always be the vice chair. Anyone else want to volunteer?
I think you do.
Well, maybe we'll do it one more time to kind of get the process set and going since we've been through it, even though Crystal did such a great job last year. She organized the heck out of us.
She did a great job.
Yeah. Okay?
A lot less.
Yeah, that's our intent.
Okay, so I'm looking for the actions. There are recommendations, so we move the staff recommendation with those two changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
You have to get healthy first.
Thank you.
Just clarifications, so are we leaving park district, because the library and other government entities, are they left out of the mix with that?
I didn't hear any other comments about it other than the one you made, Dawn.
Okay. Okay, I guess they're left out.
Any comments from the county executive?
None.
Okay, comments from board members? I do have one I'd like to address today to adjourn in memory of M.D. Marty Tarsus. Last month, Marty Tarsus, who was Sacramento County's second county executive, passed away at age 99. He served our county from January 1956 through 1968, when he left to take a similar position with San Mateo County. During his tenure at the county, he directed the modernization and reorganization of our county government and completed several major projects, including the planning and development of our regional park system, the planning and construction of Sacramento Metropolitan, now International Airport, and construction of numerous county facilities, including the courthouse. In 2011, Sacramento County honored him by naming a conference room in the county executive's office on the seventh floor. He was responsible for shaping our county government today that serves more than 1.5 million people. I think it's proper that we adjourn today in his memory. So we will close today's meeting in memory of Marty Tarsus.